What is that thing?
Share?
Oh, yes, yes. And then desktop.
Desktop of the screen. This one, yeah.
Yeah.
One of these?
Yeah.
All right, we'll start there. Looks like we don't see the camera. I don't see the camera. There we go. I think we did it.
And we have sound this week. Showed me how to turn on the Ms. Report.
Excellent. Okay. Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is October twenty eighth, six thirty. This is the Borough of Westchester Planning Commission. This is a voting session. In today is Alan Burke, Quinty Burrow, Steve Mitten, Thomas Doherty, Matt Clapp. I'm Jim Sheridan. Any announcements? Anybody on the planning commission? Okay. That's just a question. Did anybody, was anybody able to attend the Westchester presentation?
I did.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we can maybe in later on in the meeting at the end. Cover some. Okay. Any citizens' comments on items not on the agenda? Very good. Okay. First action is the approval of the September thirtieth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes. And then I make a motion that we approve those minutes. Second. Okay, all favor. All right.
Hi.
I have to stay because I wasn't here. Okay, very good.
But I did get a comment from Alan, even when he doesn't attend.
Doesn't matter.
That's right.
Excellent. Extra credit.
That's right. He caught it.
What was the correction?
It was a misstelling, yes.
Thanks, Alan. Keeping us on the toes here. Okay, very good. Back to old business. We have the, a couple ordinances to take a quick. Final look, I can't see it. Okay. Up first with the final review. And this is the Town Center Ordinance Amendment specific to the build two line where we switched it to a zero foot setback. The side yard here is zero foot. And accept that height overlay of sixty and seventy five feet where we're stepping the front yard setback to be ten feet back. I'm going to make a motion that we move this forward. Accept this and make recommendation that Borough Council approve this provision. Are there any comments, questions for you in public? Very good. I take a vote?
Yes.
Very, very good. Thank you. Next up is our ordinance for the unified residential development use, a new use in the town center. It approves and allows residential in a little higher density within the town center in specific areas. Again, I'm going to make a motion that we. So council approves or accepts this, our recommendation to move this ordinance forward. Second. Any public comment, questions?
I want you second.
Okay. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
All right. Very good. All right. Nothing new on seven hundred South High Street. No other old business issues. All right, new business. We had two thirty six East Gay Street redevelopment in last week for a sketch plan. Conversation, presentation, conversation. They have decided to move on from that property. I believe they required to yield a little bit more out of that.
They just wanted me to pass on. They called me today to discuss it. And they wanted to say they very much appreciated the fact you guys took the time to give them the feedback because it helped to really finalize the, this just wasn't the building that he wanted to move forward with. He is still looking still to do that type of development. And he is looking at other buildings in the borough. And we'll come back to you guys with, to get more feedback. He really appreciated everything you could offer.
Thank you for passing that off. Very good. Thank you. New business. Six fifteen, six seventeen, South Walnut Street, sketch plan. Want to come over?
And Jim, yeah, would it be, I have like five minutes or something to just run through that sketch that I put together just on that?
Sure. Do you guys mind a minute? Okay, very good. Do we have that available?
I don't.
Do you have a USB or a way to get that, Thomas?
Oh, if Will Mann didn't put an IP mail that's on, if it's not on.
Yeah, he wouldn't have been able to get it up today. That has to be in.
Let me just double check. I did not see it. Is that something you want to, we want to just talk about? I think if you gave it some time, but it's worth.
I did, I did. Well, let's see afterward.
Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you. You're up.
My name is Ted Oil. You are my partner, Rich St. Larry. What in principle is the best built process? Local development, best preferred, based on the wall that we made in Pizza. We get inspiration from the delicious salsa. Aaron kind of offered that we join, so I want Jim to discuss a project. Six fifteen and six seventeen South Walnut. We're early on in the process, but we wanted to, you know, make sure you came back and to talk about previous options. So if you're working on another, to do a street site plan. And fish, and take a screen, someone building details or thinking.
You have two plans, Greg.
Me too, yes. So we had two different options that we're working through. We were leaning towards the first one, but obviously. That's what we're here for, is to see what's best. So currently there's two parcels. You've got six fifteen and six seventeen South Walnut. You can see at the bottom of the screen there, there's two existing significantly semi-attached towns. What we're proposing is to consolidate these two parcels in one person. Now the plan, community projects, and each one. Tribally traditional, plowing all lines and it's a plus part of the stuff we can back to. This particular stretch shows is four new towns along Willow Alley. There's some back ten foot of, of. It's actually adding as part of the stamp, two bar front entry. And that's important for people. So this integration. The four hundred block. So. You know, that man. That's one question, thank. I'm sure once you know your down, down ass court house, it's beautiful bricks out of it. Sprint garage is really done, done very well. So we're trying to kind of veer that decision. As it currently stands, we feel pretty confident, we haven't done a survey, but we feel pretty confident. There's not something we need to require. You said, so. Obviously, we need to do a full, you know, full survey. But we think with building coverage and coverage number setbacks, yard requirements currently would be. Still early on. That's all we think. So as it currently stands, there's plenty along Mechanics Alley. There's six of these cases. We would propose removing those and having your primary street wall be Willow Alley. We did, we read some additional. There's some really helpful tips in there. It'll be conscious fully, but there's some helpful tips. And talk about where building wall should sit along. It's street music, you know, it's not Alice or. And if you're out there on Mechanics Alley, there is a big steel housing apartment. So our objective was hey, we cannot have some space or towards that. So without me, any questions on special plan one?
Well, I think, I mean, if you want to go through both of them, I think that's, that's fine. I just want to make you click at a lay of the land, kind of for anybody that's not written there. Or do you?
Is this the elevation of plan one?
No, this is the initial on similar projects. Would ask me use those dimensions for the end one. It was twenty two by thirty eight foot. A similar project nearby that we're developing. As part of the project, we're two semi-attached lines would also be renovated. They're okay. Would like this plan because it leaves the existing towns alone. Time here attaching. Yeah. That was especially panel.
Okay.
Similarly, that's plan two, same objective, same density. I will note the density calculation is done. The new removal wire installation, I think it came to like six point eight units, which you could achieve, obviously, around statues. That's something they like. So these would be a different product. These are eighteen foot wide by. With entry off of Willow Alley. These would have a one car garage parking behind effectively. And along Walnut Street, that porch that's shown there, here now we're talking, probably that portrait matched the existing setback of the other two portraits, just for. But same concept where we're very close. This one being previous colors was a question. I know we talked about the next previous pavement. We're not quite sure about how the borough doesn't get it. And that's something. Totally reasonable, like the undergrad storm that. You know, whole landscape, you plan all the, all the bells and whistles. But this is just. But your basic sketch, just to see how we. We've gone back and forth as to whether, you know, we can create the future with this. Two, I think we both think, I think seeing more wholesale products would be great. Many requirements would not apply. That that need is met. So this in the special step plan one, where we can do a product, working with builder that we know and like very much. Gives us the chance for a more attainable. I don't say for the ones that's not, that's attainable, just give a chance. Hey, it's, you know, exactly what you're very costly competitive with materials and labor prices. It's more of a standard part. We can customize it for the building. When I'm working with them on another project and it's, it's probably rebuild or rebuild or local roots. So this special one two is not have the connections of sketch plan, sketch plan one. So this may have been performed and probably it was more of a container wire, some zoning. For building coverage, for his coverage setbacks. Those are two special plans.
Okay.
We can walk through some million choices for the elevations.
Are you, did you want to reference this one? This guy?
That's, and again, this is just, you know, what we were thinking around.
Sure. Well, I just want to let you have your whole full presentation before we started us.
Thanks again for being this, that said, my name is Rich St. Larry.
But by the way, we're going to get spelling for the last.
As I mentioned, this is an example of what we're doing nearby. So these would be twenty two by thirty eight foot long units. And we were, there are going to be three beds, two and a half baths with a partial unfinished basement. We were thinking the exteriors would be, would be a mix of fibers to match with brick. Because, you know, given all the nice brick charm in the borough, people like the back tread and the two existing homes onsite have brick as well. So try to. There. Probably, you know, again, it's preliminary, but thinking like metal, metal lines over front garage. Entryway there as well. We'll have rear decks in the back of the lot. Each unit in the rear will probably be separated with fence, just to kind of divide some, some space out there. Yep. Again, we'll follow the landscape guidelines for the borough, but we're thinking, you know, kind of some betting of our providing and as well as fence around. Believe it's Mechanics Alley and then rear, rear yard. Yeah, there's a chain of fence there. Yeah, except neighbors, I'm a seat seats of four. So I would like to. Separate that. But I'd say those are the main takeaway points for in terms of look. Trying to match the style as best we can with. And keep that approach on. Again, we did model some of these thoughts off of the four hundred West Market one block.
Okay. Yes. Very good. Nothing but questions.
I just want to make one statement. I did speak with them earlier because they had submitted both these plans were a zoning review. My feeling was before we dealt with any type of zoning reviews to get more of a feedback from you guys so that they can understand what is really being looked for in the borough, which is not something that I could give them help with. So that was the purpose of coming here today is to make sure that we can, I, I think more so trying to figure out which, which one to go with.
Yeah. I mean, and I'll just add, we love it. And we love to be the time that we can be included, you know, through the process. So for the journey that borough is going to. Related.
And I just want to say thank you both of you for making that happen. It's something that Jim and Alan have been asking for, for as many years as I've been on here. And so it's really great to see that happen.
Since you're talking, Thomas, you want to start?
Sure. You might, you might flip them back up to.
Let's see here. One, that's two, that's one.
Yeah, right. And I, you know, this is exactly what we've been talking about wanting in the borough a little bit. You know, fabric that fits in with the borough character. I think, you know, the townhouses are attainable, right? You're sharing walls. It's also forming the space of the street. I love, you know, participating in the, you can see that obviously the traditional lots on the left are, are even narrower. Right? And, and they're forming the alley. That's obviously the back of those. Pump out on my Google view. Let's see, what are those? So that's facing kneels, right to the, the cage, page left there. And, you know, your, your comment about not facing Mechanics Alley, that makes a lot of sense, you know, given to, to, I think for the borough residents. There's a development that, you know, in some sense is, do you mind going to that? That Google Maps view? And then, and then just looking up a little bit of that development Mechanics Alley, you know? In some sense, that's exactly what I think. Well, I know that we as, as, as borough residents are looking to avoid, right? It's this object building surrounded by parking. And, and right now there are rules in Saldo and others that would not make that possible. Anyway, do you mind just zooming in?
Are you talking about this, guys?
Exactly, right. It's surrounded by these different alleys. Maybe that's part of the reason why it was able to be developed that way. But really, it's detrimental not contributing right to the block and to the neighbors there. And so you have this opportunity to develop, you know, this very deep lot that you guys have. And fronting Willie Willow Alley. I think makes a lot of sense and gives the opportunity to contribute. And that's not turning your back on, you know, Mechanics Alley, but that's, that's putting, not the front door, right? That's putting the side of, of the building there. Do you mind going to the two plans? Uh, yeah. Yeah, I guess. What would be interesting, what, I appreciate you guys coming in early. And I wonder if one way that we could engage with this a little bit is if we had time to digest and even sketch a little bit with you guys, thinking about, hey, how do you create space? Because I think that's so often what we're trying to do in the borough, right? Willow Alley is, if, if it's nothing but parking lots on either side, it's not formed as, as this space we love, the alleys. And so then how, what, how do you put a front, a face, you know, on the alley? And if you just look at your existing structures, they're beautiful, that beautiful side elevation on Willow Alley and then also on Walnut Street. And then I think one of, one of the stories there is how do you, how do you form space? And if you go up Walnut just a little bit, there's a beautiful, I think it's on Walnut.
Go up, if you would. Yeah. Similar to up. Nor.
There's, there's this great courtyard with a six foot brick wall. And. What did you say? No, it's like a garden wall. It's right there on Walnut. Okay, maybe not. Sorry, I'm getting us, die tracked here, but the point would be. Oh, there we go.
Very effective that one.
Where is it? Mountain?
If you could get that garden wall in there. North.
No, okay.
Lacy.
Yeah, they're, they're just top, right?
No, 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 but. Oh, sorry. I, no, I'm, and I actually found it myself here. It's, I like the bed, other one better. If, if, if you keep going up Walnut, it's the intersection of Bernard and Walnut. So just a little high rock thing for you.
Oh. It's a corner.
To the Walnut. There you go.
Right there. Move now, you know, that little detail and, and. You know, forming sidewalk, you have this hint of garden wall beyond. It's part of that front facade. So it's just an example that's your neighbor of forming space. So when I'm looking at your plan and I'm looking at the parking that you're providing, you know, on the side there, I'm thinking about how your buildings and potential garden walls, potential, you know, maybe like, they would call them a folly, but like maybe a little garden structure or something like that is forming Walnut, is forming Willow Alley, is forming the other. And I think in a lot of ways, those are the moments that maybe define projects. You know, even from like a realtor point of view, like from a marketing, you know, it's things like that. And from a cost point of view, it's a lot easier to put up a brick wall than to upgrade your kitchen to the next version. You know, if you're going to upgrade all of the inside. So that would be maybe something that I would love to doodle on if I had. It may be in response rather than try to talk through it would be. How do, and then, and then my only other comment on the other one, what, you know, you're trying to figure out, like, obviously your front facade is garages. And that's something that, you know, we're, that's not going to be the best face, right? There's a great example of new construction, or I think it's pretty great on Gay Street where the garage is tucked back and you have a front, you have these front doors. You know, the one I'm talking about, Jim, south. Okay, not south, it's east west. West.
You're talking about, you sure it's not the one that?
Uh, market, market.
That's the four hundred block market. That's the one. Yeah. They had. Well.
Yeah, right there. Your mouse is on it.
And you can look at Wallerton.
It's, it's a great example of the garage door.
And this is on the.
Being somewhat harmonious. Like, is it the best thing that's ever happened? No, but like, that's not detrimental, right? Like, that's actually contributing and it's playing that back. You know, it, it, it's, it's hiding back. Now that's one garage door. You're trying to get two from marketing point of view. So I get your second layout allows you to do that. I think there are other ways to provide covered parking other than just the bottom door. Obviously, your dollars and cents every time you do something like that. So that's attainable, whatever. But that would be my, so that was my long winded, I don't, I'm not going to give you a little.
Yeah, I actually, I liked what you said. I'm not sure necessarily that. I'm, I'm glad you brought this because it's literally what we, I don't like. So, so it's a good example of what we're not looking for. We're looking for something, quite frankly, that is more consistent to this quality and level. And a lot of this has to do with the materials. I mean, you're looking at the type and quality of the bricks and stairs and little details. The door is not right on the surface, but it's tucked in underneath. So we're, we're reading it a little bit back a little bit. And it's quiet. It just kind of tucks us back in there. And there's, there's a lot to be said for maybe going to a one door and increasing this kind of presence on the alley and less door. So I think when we were looking at this elevation, we're looking at a two thirds of it being garage doors. I think if we can reverse that or reduce that, I think would be great.
And one of those are too deep, I believe, on Market Street. I'm, they're on alley, if they're two feet garages, but the front of those are back, back to back. It's not wide, but too deep. I'm pretty sure those are too.
When you say. Oh, they're stacked that.
Stacked, sorry.
So, yeah, it's one garage door, but there's two cars in there, sort of stacked parking.
I believe there's probably one car, but it gives you storage too.
Yes. Essentially, yes, but still.
But is the code permit stacking part?
For single family, yeah, yeah, you're related. That was, you know, having a call of neighbor, I'll be having to move the car again. Yeah.
That would be something that that would be.
Right. Right.
Kind of nice too, because in that little state, I think that's what people, a lot of people are throwing their trash cans in there, so.
Tuck them in. Yeah. And I think what's, there's good. Yeah. I think there's good to bad about both plans here. I think to stick into sketch plan one, I think those decks, I think orientation wise going south, I think there's something positive about getting that evening daylight in there. The unfortunate part is, is you're looking at, and I don't know how both properties immediately south are almost a hundred percent impervious pavement there. So looking out over top of those parking lots is not necessarily the, the best view. That's why we're on this one where Thomas was saying maybe, maybe looking at walls, maybe that goes beyond this, those streets, but helps kind of buffer and reduce that impact to those. I do, I think on sketch one, I like the relief that remains on that corner. Presently, those cars are back in this corner. It's almost, it's almost a shame to have to put them here because I kind of like how that, if we could open that up and leave that kind of that green area for, for all six residents to be able to enjoy that. And more of a, I'm just going to say pedestrian lawn yard kind of area for themselves. And maybe even consider keeping those, I know they're a little bit farther away, but leaving the parking bed on the far side. Because where they, where they presently exist and where they're presently walking, so we would not necessarily reduce that, but just basically.
As long as it's there, yeah, that's really.
Yeah.
Especially if we were to, it's not showing around the sidewalk along Willow Alley between that previous.
I do have to say there's some nice big trees there on that alley right now. It would be good to. Get back to where we were here. Get back to where we were here. Oh, yeah, it's pretty a pretty good size. At least it is now. Looks uh looks bigger in person than this guy.
It does. It's about three feet.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think uh that's the downside of those things might have to come out of there. When I when I look at Sketch Plan Two, that's a very wide. Driveway with a lot of pavement. If that's ten feet, uh that certainly looks significantly more than obviously twenty four. Uh as a as it's mentioned, I think this has um. From a vehicle's ability to pull in and out of here and navigate and stack, I think makes some sense here. I do think that's a little more. I think when you drill down into this one, that up against that existing property with those windows with different floor heights is gonna prove to be. I would hate to see. And I'm jumping in. I'd hate to see something like this scale attached to the side of that building. So I think you'd have to get something that was. Uh more appropriate and scaled to that existing. Uh but in this sense, even when I look at this, I rotate, you know, rotate this just to. Give yourself a little bit of relief off that uh property line uh off of this guy. But there is. Um I think merit to. I I get the idea. I like the idea of trying to make some attainable housing. I think making that as a nature way is the only way. I do think we should pay attention to that market street and look at the breaks of that facade in scale versus that. Uh kind of, I know it's presently just a box right now with a lot of people, but uh. Getting uh keep drilling down and keep looking at that scale at a at a much smaller walkable scale as opposed to what. This is showing or what the uh or what the site plan is showing. Uh and just remember that building's uh three dimensional and not just. There's not just a front with three backsides through it, but it's really uh uh hopefully you can get something that. Pulls that neighborhood up. Um I'm glad to hear that is for sale market rate as opposed to uh it would be a. It would be a bad uh at the read the room, but yeah, it would be bad kind of be introducing more restless than that area. It's a tough one. Um Alan?
Um I want to clarify, Thomas, the the brick wall would be where? That you're.
It's an example, I would say, of forming space. So I think.
I understand, but where are you seeing it?
It's just an example of something other than building, which is contributing. Alright, so it could contribute on any of the different areas as opposed to an object.
Yeah, okay. So I'm automatically gonna be a much bigger fan of of Plan One because it keeps in place. A building that's been there since nineteen hundred and uh seems to be very uh much Westchester. We've done a lot of work to try to hide parking. It's you can't really hide parking, but this. Doesn't, it kind of puts the parking on display, so it makes me wonder. First and foremost, any work Thomas is willing. Put toward this would be definitely eye opening and probably a a great idea, but to me, I I'd rather maybe see that on the. See the parking on the alley and even if the building has to inch down, you know, a little bit. That's. You know, and and the scale that uh Jim talked about it was really important and the take a hard look at what. Um Westchester really is. Take a look at Burger View and see. There's a complete and total uh commitment to the architecture that is. Westchester and um you know, I I'd make that my. Dream scenario as opposed to the one on Market Street. I if I had the attitudes, so. Yeah, there you go. So anyway, um I I think those are my.
But that's that, that's the uh.
And quite frankly, some of that is actually simpler. Take some of the geometries out of it and some of all those uh material transitions and stuff. It makes it just a simple, clean. Uh quiet and appropriate approach. Pity. Do you have, I'm sorry, Alan, do you have anything on the other plan or the elevations or just that you've been?
It it includes taking that building out. I.
Okay.
I would definitely be.
Yeah, I don't think they were taking the building out.
It may be something we're powerless to do anything about, but I.
Well, no, they were leaving the buildings out. They were just adding one more to it.
Oh, um. If it can be done with a sympathetic addition. Tough to do.
Yeah.
Very tough to do, but wouldn't rule it out. I'd love to see what. Yeah, I mean, the thing that's thing that they're doing on uh. Gay right now on the two hundred block of Gay, West Block of Gay. Essentially what you're talking about and you know, they pulled it off. Yeah, across from the church. From the. Saint Agnes, yeah. Um, okay.
Pity.
I promise. Did you have that idea of putting some sort of.
Which porch?
The others porches are those.
These are.
The existing porches?
Um but yeah, I do. I like Sketch number one more. Um I think what Jim said was the scale. Um I think it's very important to consider. I think the. I think given the Westchester's historic charm, I think that is a very important thing to include. Um. And I think everyone else is covered. It's just a great ideas. I, yeah, that's what I got, but um. I do wanna see this type of historic stuff.
Steve. Thank you for coming in and being receptive to, you know, to tremendous. Uh that we have. To help, you know, guide, build yourself into doing things that are gonna be, you know, tremendous assets to. It's reminiscent of uh the Arnold property and um I don't know if you're. Yeah, and and his worthiness and his word, his ability to work with. Similar thing. Um you know, anytime he gets feedback from guys who are missionaries, like you guys, it's it's only an asset to you and. I I think I would try, I would prefer Sketch Number One for the same reasons that Alan says, keeping the existing buildings. Facade facing Walnut Street. Um you know, changing Walnut Street from. You know, what what I remember be in the game. Yeah, you know, college. Party scene into be more residential. More familiar, it is certainly something that's that's an asset to to the borough as well. So I I think that's a step in this right direction. Um Alan's point and I would make your point about those parking spots right there towards Walnut Street, you know, sure, I think that'd be probably. Better served to be back and the facade in front, you know, with what these guys suggest. So thank you for being here and you're willing to work with these guys to get something that would be great. I think we're over a building, uh building coverage. Kind of similar. Small alley, but it was four garage days. But with that, that that walk forward.
Are you talking about the carport? Marshallton has some beautiful examples of exactly that. I mean, that's that's a really historic thing you see around Doyle Doylestown. Is that up north of us? Yeah, like forty five minutes. Doylestown has a couple um really great ones too, you know, hundred, a hundred and fifty years old. Um and I think it's another person, I think another great example of forming space with traditional materials. It's something where when you're looking at, you know, what am I selling? What's what's the um feel or the, you know, character? Of this development, you could timber frame that. For relatively low cost, but these are real, you know, red oak timbers from Peacock or whatever that you can bring in there and get guys to timber frame that. Um and really up the feel and character of the place at at a lower investment. So I think.
Yeah, I mean, I would look at it as an opportunity. I mean, I you like Thomas said, two two points is one thing, having three that creates that. Place.
That's all right. No, it's a great question. Um I think that's a good good thought. Uh I don't have. I I think everybody's hit. I think, you know, I'll I will lend uh also voice my support for Sketch One, which it sounds like you guys are. More inclined to go with anyway, um for the same reason we we prefer it. Um scale, materials, parking, I I agree with all my colleagues. Uh the only thing I would add is. Um I wouldn't just focus on the front when it comes to materials. I'd like to see like some of the other buildings in town. I wanna see that brick wrapped around the sides. Um that way you're coming down walnut, you look to the side, you. Maybe you see a carport or a covered garage, but you also see brick on those buildings. Uh that would be the only additional piece. We're trying to promote that on all these. Developments um going forward. Um other than that, I I do appreciate the chance to see both both sketches and you guys coming forward. To talk to us about it. Always results in a better project. So thanks.
From a zoning standpoint, I'm not gonna talk about planning because it's not my thing zoning. The I'm also in favor of one, which I told you previously. Um because you have a better chance of meeting or setbacks with that one than you do the other. Because putting the three along the back, gonna be at a zero setback on that side, which isn't allowed in that area. Um the only caution, and I agree with Alan about the parking spots being to the front, the only caution of that is that if you move those buildings forward. Put them in the same way along what um below. You're gonna be coming close to those existing buildings and you may not have the proper setbacks from those. So we need to look into that and you may, if you do wanna go with that, it may be something you think about possibly getting a uh. Variance um zoning hearing board to allow you to switch those parking spaces from the front to the back.
What is that?
From parking to building is five, it it's a parking accessories accessory, so it'll be five feet, but I'm concerned about moving those buildings for, you know. Towards walnut and encroaching between those two buildings. Those need to be, I'd have to look specifically as to what it is.
I didn't see a building to building.
Well, you have your rear yard setbacks. You do have to account for some sort of a rear yard there. So so it would probably be a minimum of ten feet, at least. Some some might be fifteen. I have to check. I think everybody's pretty much in favor of one.
I think one with some work. So um while we're here, is anybody from uh, does anybody from the. Public comments?
I I apologize. I got your. Um I missed the context of the beginning. Um it sounds like these are single family homes. Um it are are have you had this property for a while or did you, cause I think there was a for sale sign on it. So you get bought it and uh. And you're coming in and and if I'm reading this right, there's six units here, the two facing walnut that are the current house. There and then the four along the alley there and um and then conversation. But this is great. I mean, I love the idea of taking assets and building homes for sale and even talk about.
Yeah, and I do, I do really think restoring that that front twin be a. Awesome. Another hundred years out of it. So, yeah, I mean, we're, I appreciate you coming in and getting the confirmation, the feedback. We're really looking to push towards preservation as well as. Anything that's going and actually becoming a contributing resource and being consistent with uh more of a historic uh supposed to. In quality of materials and designs.
Jim, could I maybe highlight something real quick? I know I already spoke for a while, but I'm seeing dimensionally a ten foot side yard setback, correct? And I'm also seeing a twenty foot rear yard setback, right?
Yeah.
And we're also talking about separation between buildings. And the example that I showed a second ago of that wall, I believe would not be permitted with our with our fence and wall. Zoning requirements, the one that the historic one. So this might be an uh an interesting or valuable example for us. As we think about, hey, what is the best thing for Willow Alley for the neighbors? For the future homeowner, uh you know, ho- homeowners here. Um. Why do we have a ten foot rear on Willow? Why is there a twenty foot or or I'm sorry, ten foot side on Willow? Why do we have a twenty foot rear on mechanics? Are those things that in this case, maybe a variance would be. You know, the best thing suitable for moving forward, you know, given that much of the precedent we're gonna cite. The neighbors, you know, they don't actually uh correspond to these things. So I just wanted to highlight. That they're thinking about that, you know, and and when we're thinking about. Uh Matt, we want brick. We want brick to wrap around. We always want that. Developers are also builders. Um you know, they're. They're costing, you know, you're thinking about all the costs, you're thinking of the timeframes and everything. And so where is that kind of give and take uh? Like, what can we give? What can we, you know, um to to try to make this the best thing? So I'm just noting a couple. Things that you guys are just taking for granted. I've got all these things. I've gotta get my two car, you know, park. I've gotta do all the different things I need to do. Right, like right now, uh the rear parking, you know, you got some parking up top, you're adding that. And you're putting one, two, three, four, which is what you need for the two existing structures right there. And then you're gonna do the two tuck under per. And it'd be interesting to toy around with different arrangements that might uh need side variances.
But this is, we go in any questions. The first thing we're thinking about is not, is can I do this in a buy right? The project performance doesn't always mean, like I I think this group is phenomenal because it's the intersection of. Like, what do we buy with the code? Maybe we require a variance.
Just a general thought, when you say affordable housing, what do you envision that?
So I I do wanna clarify, we do not afford housing now. We bought a ten one house because it's for the. Show up there. It's a very standard pallets. Uh it's I think most most attractive pallets. Price wise. Five hundred to six hundred something. But for the world, if we're in a construction house.
What did you try with on?
The square around two thousand. Not small, I mean, but enough for a family, one or two children. That's a great question. What's a hobble?
Second, my second question. There's some um. Brick or my houses uh that are two of them that are built in the two hundred block of. West Lafayette and there's an alley there. That I did were really well done with that lot uh several years ago, I guess about five or six. Have you seen them?
Yeah, my I haven't known this. They're really built.
They're, they're really built.
Oh, yeah.
They've got a one car ride leaving back with the parking space. Yeah, they did most of the job there.
Yeah, I, I didn't know that was something that was attainable. That sounds, I, I think it was one of the examples.
Do you know, uh, where that's located? It's 221 west or 22, what it says 221 west Lafayette. The preservation, um, they, they won a preservation award actually for that. And I thought an interesting aspect of that is, is really, I, I, I believe, you know, when they receive that, it was their ability to preserve the street and, and form that street.
Okay.
Well, it's awful. That's correct, but I think, uh, the award was really, and I guess that's why I brought it up, that, um, they were sympathetic to the street. And where that was starting to, the street was starting to fall away. It's really forming Lafayette in a distinct way, in a, in a way that, you know, holding the alley. And so they won an award for that from the preservation of downtown.
Very. Can you get this builder?
Mayor, nice example.
Yeah.
So is this attainable housing? Is this a $500,000?
No.
Maybe five years ago it was built.
But I also think this is larger. You had some eighteenths. So that's not 18. I mean, you also had a couple, uh,
22.
22, okay. And that gives you the, that gives you the two bedroom on one side, which is valuable.
Yep.
So if I could just say a word about this. The ordinance has led you to these two buildings facing the alley. And therefore you're just seeing the side of the building. So the reason that this was recognized was the fact that they figured out, because there was no way to deal with parking with middle house. But they figured out how to pull that off. And if you go around the back, you can see they share a curb cut into it and it required, I, I'm just not recalling, I think it required some, uh, forgiveness of the, the ordinance, but they pulled it off well and the, the end result is Lafayette. Now that whole block is a community, you know, with all the houses facing, yeah. And that's, that's the thing that we felt was remarkable about, about that. Because by right, they couldn't, they would have just put that up with those two houses facing the alley and they'd have lost a community opportunity.
And that's important.
You don't want it to, I'm sorry.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
Get the worst.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Award winning project.
From one of your suppliers.
Four, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks a lot.
Yes, thank you.
Just so you guys know, if I get developers coming in like this. Because when they came in, I'm sitting there going, how do I decide? But what if I don't do this?
Yeah, let's get all the questions out early on.
Yeah.
Save this time, come back all the time and then get.
People's money. Very good.
Thank you so much.
Now, when I can, like, we have developers come in and ask us these questions that I have sit down meetings with them to go through the basic zoning stuff that I can handle. Um, and I'm looking at, I'm leaning towards one because just strictly from zoning, I'm not looking at it like when Alan said that, you know, the, the opportunity to create a community, uh, that never even crosses my mind because it's not what my job is about. Um, but that's why, once I found out about the sketch program that you had, because no, no other community I was at had that. Um, and it seems to be quite common around here, but, um, once I saw that, I'm like, sure, I'll get you in this weekend. Give me this by Friday.
That's perfect. We appreciate that. Yeah, I, when, uh, I drove over there, rode around the block, uh, went past Daryl's house a couple of times. And then, uh, but you know what's amazing? I, I was looking at the properties just below it and it, that is such a shame. It's, it's a property line, a property line, uh, patuminous pavement. You know, and I'm looking at, uh, zoning relative to purview coverage. I don't even know how you got here, but, and I don't, I agree with, uh, the same comments about some of the other buildings. It really, it really just kind of fractures and falls apart in that relative to holding, uh, streets and alleys and, and creating places, the only places and spaces that are there are awful. They're just, uh, giant parking lots. Okay, very good. Uh, that's a nice one. Um, are there any reports? Oh, you know what? Uh, while we're here, and, uh, I do want to hear from Steve, you said you attended the meeting. Where did it go?
It should be right there.
Okay, so I forward the, uh, uh, map of that link. Now, these are identifying student rentals. These are where the student rental permits are presently. Um, and if we happen that.
If we make one note on this, there are three that are on here that are no longer student rentals. We just hadn't, they have only removed themselves as student rentals over the last several months. So we weren't, didn't have a chance to update this, remove those three. So.
Sure. And this, yeah, and this is really the edge is located here. And these are the ones that are on, these are the ones that are legally, uh, operating as student rentals. This is Westchester University's campus. This is the College Arms property. Uh, and then that park is back there.
So the purple is all student rentals?
Yeah.
They're all.
Yeah. So if you. Here?
Yeah.
It's the door.
That is reverse. Yeah, there's another one up here that it's the same thing. These are the apartment, it's the apartment complex and stuff. But there's rental licenses and therefore.
Oh, and the metropolitan?
Yep. For the metropolitan. Yes.
Yes.
So if you go back into each one of these things, we.
No, they may only have one student. And as a, as renting that, this is where everybody that we've identified student living.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Is this the licenses or is this just where students are living?
This is, yeah, this is licensed licenses.
So that's what I'm thinking. It doesn't really include market rate, I mean, market rentals or, uh, affordable rental workforce. This is the property you're looking at. So presently it's these two right here. So, yeah, I think that's one of the Westchester Off Campus housing properties right behind it.
I think you're awful. What? Zoom out. It's actually this one here. This is Walmart Street. It's this one.
No.
No, I'm right.
I'm right again. Now it's, it's Willow Alley right here. Yep. Yeah. It is tough relative to, to front yard, side yard, set, uh, rear yard on that, when you have three.
Well, even, even so, it'd be just valuable.
Yeah.
When, yeah, you start looking into HOA concept.
Mm-hmm.
Because the HOA kind of slides under and you get these unintended, maybe not unintended consequences, but like, when that zoning was written for side rear and all that, they weren't thinking of multiple single family dwellings on, as an HOA.
Mm-hmm.
And so then you end up dealing with interesting situations for, you know, where was that the intent to stay 20 feet off of, uh, um, mechanics because of the two existing um, primary structures? And I think it gives us an opportunity to kind of just relook at what's being built and what's the best thing for the borough and the three public, you know, the, the public realm.
Are you, you're talking about these existing parking?
I'm just talking about in general.
Yeah.
There, and you know this, you're working with these guys all the time and people like this. What are the rules?
Mm-hmm.
And they're assuming that, like, they don't, a variance is a, a door to being, you know, sued and projects slowing down and all that. So they're just kind of like, hey, we're going to stay 20 foot off no matter what. Yeah.
And I do think the idea though of posing up, potentially putting a garage or something up there, rather scream or hide.
Right.
Just gives it another opportunity to check.
Though there again, you know, there, like, you're going to start very quickly running into like that brick wall isn't transparent enough, I think, for its proximity to the front yard. Given our, we have wall or like, uh, like our rules.
Putting it outside.
Yeah. So that's a six right there, probably six and a little bit higher.
Well, that might be difficult for a six foot and a four foot, probably would not be.
Maybe. And then, you know, I'm thinking about an accessory structure, you know, that's a parking structure. You know, is that five foot off of the side yard? I think that's what an accessory structure would need to be. So it'd be valuable to sketch.
Yeah.
The ideal and then see how it lines up.
Sure. Yeah, I just would try to scream my soft and softness up a smidge.
I think that's right.
Sorry. Architectural top. I think, um, all right, very good. So, um, Steve, you had a chance to get to, well, we have, uh, any reports? Anything from zoning hearing?
Anything from. Zoning hearing did pass for 740 west or 740 Matlock, South Matlock. Um, it was a resurfacing and enlarging of a parking area. And there was an issue that I believe it's 112 602 P requires you to have, just like you did on that, those two properties in Lafayette, on any street, um, any parking lot like that, that is more than three parking spaces, has to be separated from the street with a six inch cement, uh, cement curb, concrete curb. Um, and because of, and this is a situation that was brought up at there is that there was a change to protect alleys. And they included alleys in the definition of street. And this is one of those unintended, unintended consequences of not being able to see the entire code and missing one, you know, literally one sentence that was causing this individual to have to spend about $2,000 to go through zoning hearing. Um, we did not fight it at all. We actually recommended that they, you know, we didn't make a recommendation either way, but we, we have actually implemented an amendment to correct that moving forward. You guys were aware of that coming through. That went through smart growth and I think it's coming back for, uh, uh, approval in a hearing, a public hearing. So, but this gentleman couldn't wait long enough for it. So he went through the zoning hearing and he was awarded the relief in that regard. Because it does in that location specifically pose safety, not only, a safety concern, not only to the snowplows, emergency services, but also it would be the only curb in 200 feet of alley. And the people that, you know, you go from one walking, that's like that step that's a quarter of an inch off. You trip on every time because it's just, your brain is used to not having it that way. So, um, that was, that relief was given and then the applicant for 436, um, North Church Street would like an opportunity, we sat down with them and they'd like an opportunity to go back and explain the concepts that they're having.
Okay.
Um, to Smart Growth. Um, so they had continued it to next month, November. However, next month is the 24th, which is right before Thanksgiving, and there may be some difficulty with having enough people to have a forum for zoning hearing board. So we're still trying to work out whether.
Okay. Very good. Um, isn't it? Comments from commission members. Uh, I guess Steve, you had an opportunity to get to that meeting.
Yeah. Nicole was there, very well. And, you know, the, I, I think the prior issue is rezoning. Rezoning that from NC2 to PC, uh, and the elected officials needing to listen to their constituents and whether or not they should do that. Um, university had a nice presentation, lovely rendering of, um, you know, changes that they wanted made, including a, uh, welcome center and, you know, for the borough as well. So you can talk about where they're going to park people. Um, lovely little courtyard in between the two. I don't know, maybe it's not here right now, but having grown up on Rosedale Avenue, lived across from the university, lived down there in South Adams, it, whatever assurance the university was giving that they would have RIA's resident assistance living there. They would be, that, that those, that housing would be under the jurisdiction of the university police. You and I and everybody knows what that courtyard is going to be homecoming weekend. Uh, commence weekend, uh, maybe every Thursday, Friday, Saturday. You know, I mean, that, that is adjacent to where the rat was in Linden Street, South Juana Street, and this lovely little courtyard in between the two rows of townhouses, you know, from Rosedale Avenue up to Linden. You just know what that's going to be. Regardless, regardless of what they say. So there was a question asked, what could the university do under the current jurisdiction of NC2? And the university is not interested in doing anything. So, you know, my thought of that was, well, would that then force the university to sell that property? And what else could that property be if it was purchased by, you know, a private adult rather than 400 student beds? And everybody sees the need for increased student beds at a affordable cost. You know, the, the renderings that, that they gave, you know, certainly something that I'm sure I'd like to hear with everybody's thoughts and here of one man. Uh, some underground parking, that kind of stuff. But, you know, my, my, my interest would be to say, really, what, what would the university force to do if they don't get a zoning change? And then what are those possibilities going that way? And I think that alternative, you know, is something that the people of the Southeastern quadrant, the borough deserve to know what it would be besides our students.
Sure.
So, you know, to me.
Yeah, they, they've kind of skipped past the, what kind of a yield would they get at NC2 if they just actually looked at it as NC2? If they looked at different types of buildings, even if they, I'll just use like a triplex or, or three flats in a, in setup as twins. So when you look at it and, and say, if we just carve this up at 20 foot wide lots and, and placed, uh, twins on there that had, let's just say, for instance, six apartment units each. I mean, three apartments you can see. So, uh, you could actually get a pretty, uh, good yield out of that. But there was never any, uh, they never showed the work. They just showed a new result, which I think is a distraction from the ask. The ask is, we'd like to look at this ordinance from NC2 to PC2. Uh, so it kind of skipped a whole lot. And then even with that, they didn't really demonstrate like this is how pedestrian circulation is working. This is how vehicular, this is what happens to move in day, this is how deliveries come or whatever it might be. So it was very, uh, big picture at this point, but, uh, the ask was really about zoning. So when I looked at, uh, uh, Lisa's and, uh, presentation, and when you're trying to listen to, you're saying, are people objecting to people? Like the students or are they objecting to the buildings? Like, which one's the, uh, problem? I really, uh, at the Borough Council Voting Session, when the students showed up and voiced their, uh, concerns and needs to have housing and housing close by the campus, uh, it was, that was something I, I really agree with. I think if I was a parent and sending somebody, somebody was from Pittsburgh and I was sending opposite side of the state and I was not, I was not familiar enough with the borough, the towns, and I wanted my student there and they only had housing for freshmen. And then after that, you're on your own. I'd like to at least know that they were within a block or two of the school. Uh, I'm not, and quite frankly, I think it would benefit the borough, the closer we kept the students to the campus, the better. We don't want to promote it four, five, six blocks deep and having them come through and having them within, I'll just say, the, uh, areas that are more residential. So it was that. I'll just say the, uh, areas that are more residential. So it was that. Yeah, I, I, I think it's presently owned by the university. It's presently. At Runcle Club University. Uh, my concern though is Rosedale and High is bad intersection. How are they planning on getting that? Density, but it's already still there. It's just back one. It's, it's, you're just kind of a, so I'd like to see, I'd like to see, I, I think it's, it's coming back to smart growth, Nicole.
Coming back to smart. Um, I will be curious to see. How they ensure the feedback that was provided on, um. At the meeting. You know, um, if they, they had the same takeaway that, that, that. You guys were kind of having, like, what, what does it look like as an entity two? I mean, I, I, I spoke about the meeting, my, I do know they, they own it. They have students that lived there for all that time and, you know. At least thirty years as far as I can remember, further and, and it, you know, there's, if there is the N C two that can work. And that everybody can have a win win or some other something, something that can be a win win for everyone, it would be, it would be nice. Um. Uh, I don't, I don't know what that is. I don't know all the zoning rules. My, you know, a little bit there. But, but yeah, I'd be curious to see what the, um, what they take away.
Um, there's. As it sits right now, it, the use. The use probably the structure almost definitely and the lot would be. Lawful non-conformities in the N C two district. Which means that they could technically tear it down. Um, and enlarge it generally by twenty five percent. Um. And there would be, and that would be allowed. I think it's one twelve. Eight, ten, which deals with non-conformities. I might be off on the, but it's.
Cause at one point I, I asked Kristen a similar question and she, she said they can't tear it down and rebuild it. In N C two.
And there, it's a non-conformity that probably could get away with it. And this is. I had Kristen, myself and Brian sat down and went over this also. And we went back and forth and it's not an easy, it's, it's not easy to go through. Um, we're not a hundred percent certain they can do it, but most likely they would be able to, but. You're only talking at, at max twenty five percent, um, which would not be a very large in, in. Increase. It would be a increase, but not a huge one. Um, and that was part of the reason why they, you know. It was one of the things that we were discussing with Ryan, um. And it was trying to get an idea of what he was talking about, as why he was driving it in this way and, and where they were going with it. Because they can, you know, try to figure out if there was anything to be done in the N C two. Um, and Kristen is not a hundred percent sure that we can, um. Do anything with it, the N C two.
Well, that's why the comment had been made, well, maybe they could sell it. Well, the only person that's really going to be selling, to be fair, it would be a developer looking to put probably something very similar. I would be looking to say, hey, uh, just like these guys, I was. Glad to hear they were worth that market.
And we don't know that they would sell it, uh, the university.
Yeah, but, but there are building types that are available in the N C two that offer. Greater density than even the building they present at. So when you're looking at that building and saying pep lock six hundred feet long. If you took twenty foot locks, that's thirty, uh, twenty foot wide. Uh, I mean, you start breaking it up and start going, well, if I can get. Twelve students in, uh, uh, with whatever it might be, even if it's, we have to figure out. I have no idea because we didn't see floor plans. But they're talking about eighty four units with, uh, five students each. So I don't know what that means. Uh, five students, are they single occupancy, double occupancy rooms? Uh, so I need to understand what that is. They're calling it townhouses, but it's a two hundred foot long townhouse. So I'm not sure what that means. Is it, is it a? Really a apartment building or multifamily type of structure that's just broken up on the. Exterior to look like townhomes. Right, it must, because with. Sure. But it's, it's really for upperclassmen. So they're talking about, uh, sophomores, juniors, seniors. Uh, as the, uh, end users. Uh, so I mean, uh, there, we just didn't have enough information. It seemed to skip over some important pieces. So. I do think there's somewhere in there, but procedurally, is it coming back to smart growth and then going to Borough Council, Borough, uh, Working Session then?
Think what's, they need to come back, I mean. Hopefully they, they heard the feedback.
Okay.
I will be surprised and not delighted. If they come back to smart growth without hearing the feedback that came out of that.
Sure, sure.
So I will be curious to see what they present to us.
Eventually, from what Kristen was saying, it's, it's going to be the discretion of council as a whole, so whether or not they're going to entertain. Any type of rezoning order, text amendment.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've heard much feedback from the residents, um. And no one is happy with the idea of the, now they're like, how people that were okay. Um. But most feedback that I've received is. Kind of not happy with the idea of the P U state, um, hotbed. So, and I'm hoping that the university also heard that and potentially. But my question is then, yeah, what, what is possible? I, I, I don't know. I, I, I. Yeah, I, what is possible? Because they have been, they have experienced rentals for thirty plus years and all of these things and they can, you know. Contain it as much as they have been. Um, my, I'd like to be able to see kind of something that's. Workable for everyone, um, but it definitely sounds like the community in general is very against the idea of rebuilding. And coming forth with four hundred versus two hundred.
Okay, so procedurally, not sure, we're going to see, we're not going to have a conversation with them as much as they probably, yeah.
Um, it's probably gonna have more conversation and like, hopefully they, they are taking.
All right, anybody else have anything to talk?
Can I just one comment on that?
Absolutely.
I think, um, you know, when I think about like the student, um, overly district. We have all these different ordinances, um. Other than zoning, right? We have a noise ordinance, we got, um, a trash, we have a maintenance, we have, we have all these different, um. Uh, ordinances that are put in place to, uh, maintain or, you know, uphold the quality of life in the borough. Understandably, there's a certain, you know, demographic, the student body. It, I, it must be that it's, it's harder to maintain, you know, that quality of life. Um, with those different ordinances. Um, and so it's better to have, you know, uh, the student overly district, which limits where they can be. But I think like deep, you know, cause a second ago you said something about, you know, it's a problem, the stu-, you know, the people or the this. And I think, well, the problem's the noise. Right? The problem is the disturbance. And so we're really good that for you. When we're thinking about that, what are the other tools that we have in the toolbox to help us deal with some of that? And I think of like. Philadelphia and you go to like, um, uh, sis-, uh, society help? Yeah, and, um, you know, some of the old, uh, graveyards. It's not like a six foot, it's like a ten, twelve foot wall, right? And you see that up in Boston too often, um. In the, in the downtown areas, the schools do have these very large walls and you won't know that there's. All the noise going on until you pass a gateway and all of a sudden, oh, the noise comes out of you. Um, similarly, you know, if you're in Philly and you're at like Alfred's Alley area, right? There is a highway. Interstate that's just across the way, but you don't hear it because of the mason ring. So mason ring is a really good way of both shielding visually. And all, um, noise. And so maybe there's a way too that we can. Be creative about suggesting things to them, you know, keep it, you know. What, what do we do to help mitigate, or we recognize that the issue is the noise, right? The issue is, you know, these different party.
No, there's a number of actual issues.
Okay, okay, but you could list it, but hopefully the issue is not into people.
Well, well, I think it's people's behavior when you have four hundred in one spot.
Okay, so now, but we could, we could describe like what are the, what are the issues that? That residents have with that, right? So, you know, we're talking about having apartment complexes, but Eli's building is four hundred people in one spot. There's a certain expectation, right? That they're not going to be throwing trash out of their rear windows. And unfortunately, that's happening. So how do we uphold that? And I'm just thinking, we could get creative and start suggesting some of these tools that. We can see in other places that do a great job of stopping noise and, and kind of containing, you know, the craziness of children, uh, young, young people.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, and that's why when I was listening to everybody, sure to listen to council members, trying to listen to residents, trying to listen to the students and. And hearing what each one, I thought, you know, would really benefit if they went through a process like these developers are doing. With people that are more familiar with Westchester and more familiar with their concerns. They, I think they're, they jump right to. And, and no offense to a Bethlehem firm, but they, I'm not sure that they have necessarily the same, uh. The feet on the ground in the same way, and they're not necessarily understanding what we're seeing as the same concerns. And there's things that can be done with that building to kind of attach it more to the university and separate it from the neighborhoods at the same time, have the scale of the neighborhoods. Uh, and Westchester in mind. So it's just the opportunity to have those conversations. It, it's, they seem to have jumped. Uh, a little bit past.
So, but you're saying you would, they would probably benefit by having a conversation.
Yes, well, I'm just saying this is, it sounds like it's gonna, I'm, I'm just. I'm trying to back analyze this. Nobody's ever, they're not speaking to the planning commission. They're going to smart growth.
What happened with that was we, we kind of went back and forth whether or not they should come here this month to at least talk to you guys about it. And because in our last meeting, we specifically said they come back to smart growth. Or coming back to the planning commission. We kind of said, all right, well, this is what we said over here. So. Um, it, yeah, depending on what they come forth with, um. My month seems worth a conversation. With you guys, then maybe that would be another step afterwards. Like again, I want to see where they come back.
Yeah, and I think there's, and it, it really, from smart growth, it was a. It was an opportunity then to get feedback from the council and then to get feedback from the neighborhood.
Yes.
So that they could come back and actually bring something that would. Show that they're trying to do something before we even brought, before they even brought it back to here.
Right.
Um, and that, then that was kind of the reason why they didn't just come back here with this meeting. Um, and it was just to see how they, what they did with the feedback that they were given.
And however, I just wonder if, you know, the feedback from some of the neighbors was so. Bitless. Uh, that I think that if they added twenty more students, it would be.
Sure.
Because as long as they maintain that dock there. They'll be happy. They don't want anything. To be done there. They like the status quo. And that's okay. I mean, I think there was some predation saying. It's not legal.
Right.
It's not even remotely attractive. Um, college. And, um, they had that property for over. You know, they bought all those properties and now it's time to do something. And perhaps, and I do agree that was probably too ambitious of a project in that area. But it, my concern is it has been a neighborhood in a while.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's forward facing, high people pay for the university.
Mm-hmm.
So it makes sense to, you know, take the people out of. On the street, out of the students, out of all the students. Not actually, so the neighbors do have a little more keys.
Mm-hmm.
And it leaves students, well, the students, but it leaves the. Containment to a certain degree.
Sure.
Yes, they'll be in the court.
Yeah.
But it's better in people's backyards.
Sure.
I think.
I agree, I agree. I think that's definitely true.
I do think that will actually happen. I mean, or are we just adding?
Well, I think.
That's the number. We're talking about the concept.
Right.
So I don't know what number is doable. But, you know, so that there is. There is, uh, you know. So that the neighborhood feels comfortable with it. I'm sure there is a magic number somewhere there. I don't know where that falls. I don't know. One fifteen, two hundred, two fifty. I don't know where that.
True.
Is, you know, obviously it's not four hundred or three hundred itself, but. That makes it a building and yet it is, it's. Feeding to the neighborhood. That is behind it. Um, so that. These students are housed out of the community. Everybody should wait until hell. And, um.
So, so my question is. How do we get them out of the neighborhood? Cause right now we have more people, more students looking for places. So they will all go into that, whether it's five, fifty or four hundred. But then the other students.
I think more students, it's a university has raised the number of students.
No, no, it's just we know how many students are looking.
More will be available, more housing will be available.
The more beds the university can accommodate, the less that are going to be out of the.
Uh, more will be, I think more will be out of the housing than into this house.
Uh, that, that's my, uh, my thought. Uh, and I also think to answer this question, we're, more so, and this is why I met you, Aaron. You know, I'll throw it today, we do a better job. If, uh, as the borough or, and, and I think you're starting to do some things and stuff, things, it's tricky. We have a lot of students in non-student residence. Um, some, you know, it's windy, so it is what it is. Um, it's not a windy, and against the student placement thing permitting. Uh, regulations that we probably had for a while and there, the child gathers like thousands, you know, maybe a couple thousand. Again, some might be mine, good ones, but some are not. And how? How do we continually enforce the rules we put in place? Because we've not done a great job of enforcing these rules that we put into place. So there are more students out there than what we said. Um, and. By just doing that, we should help to drive out some of the. Student, like the, you know, would be driving out the, the housing where families live or what have you. By, by actually following for, for regulations.
Uh, I will say that there are individuals that break the rules. And unfortunately, in code enforcement and, and doing that, it's not a fast. Way of catching people. Um, and it's done that way specifically to protect people's rights. Um, we are very limited in what we can do and most of the stuff we figure out, and Sean made a great explanation of this. It's the fact of increasing permitting for parking. It's in, it's interconnecting parking, public works. Um, police department and code enforcement altogether. When one of us is doing a license and people come in for parking and they say they're a student. And there's four students, all of a sudden parking flags that goes immediately to code enforcement. We start cracking down on them. Um, right now, I will tell you that of the five. We have five thousand eight hundred and twenty rental licenses. In the borough.
Total.
Total licenses. And of those, we are down to about a hundred and forty that have not. Met all the requirements and we are going to court with them. To do that. And there are, I know at least six that are refusing to ask whether or not they're students. And so it, what will happen is once we get through the court, we will be citing them every day that they do not have their information in. Which will be a thousand dollar fine every day that that exists until they determine they want to actually play by the rules. Um, but unfortunately, the way things are done and the way we have to build the case to win it. It, it takes at least thirty to sixty days for us to get through anything. So it is slow. It's not fast.
Aaron, you said there's five hundred, five thousand eight hundred and twenty total. Do you have any stu-, student?
I don't know the exact number. It is written down. I. And I should have brought that. I didn't know. I don't know the exact number. It is written down. I, and I should have brought that. I didn't know.
I'd like to know because between that and the master plan, we should understand how many beds are after.
Is it like twelve hundred or something?
It's, well, I know that there are, it's gonna be between twelve to fifteen hundred. And I, we, we had discussed this and went through the, the numbers. And to be quite honest with you, everything else, all the numbers that I've been going through my head lately, I don't remember the exact number, but it's.
There you go.
I just had my, last Monday was my ninetieth day.
Well, okay. Um, well, I just think it's worth, I'll, I'll try to attend the, uh, Smart Growth, but I do think, it's interesting, I mean, to be fair, the university's been here since eighteen twelve. So I mean, it, it's not like anybody's moved into the borough and there's been nobody that's alive that's been here longer than the university. So, I mean, to, to come in and be surprised that there's college students is, is, uh, I don't know what to say about that. But, uh, I, I do think it's, it's, it's also a concern from those, uh, that the university has to own some of their own. They have to take care of, they have to provide some housing for their students. They have to. So I understand where there's a need from their end and they're trying to do something about it. Uh, can they do more within their existing PUC or down in West Ocean? Uh, I know the edge is over there. I don't know how many students are in there, but we don't count that, but it's right on Rose Day. So I don't. As far as I'm concerned, they're, they're all hitting that same intersection in high notes.
I will tell you this, that we were contacted by, um, a gentleman from Indiana County who is helping Indiana, the town borough of Indiana, because they are dealing with a state school, also IUP, Indiana University of Pennsylvania. And the comments that I was getting from him was that, how do you even get them to do anything? They're not recognizing their right to even to zoning or land. Uh, and I just basically said, because we basically made them. Uh, and it's at a point where things haven't always been nice between the, to both community and the college, but they're working towards it. There's still a lot of things that aren't right, but we're getting there. But here, at least, we've retained the right as a borough to do land use and zoning. And to have a, and I was trying to explain to him what the conditional use in the P, the PUC district, which still gives land control and some input in that regard too. Um, they, they had no clue any state school was allowing that to occur. Um, so they're, they're gonna be calling back next week also to have some time to sit down and go over some of the things that we've been doing. Um, so it's not uniquely Westchester. It's pretty much any, any city, you know, township with a state school in it.
So, so I think that's a nice point that you made. I think, um, despite some concerns, this administration, maybe they're not perfect, but I think they are trying to play by the rules and, and work with us on things that, again, probably not perfect and, you know, and people are, were a little angry for the anger the other time. Um, but, um, we're fortunate we're not in a situation.
But thank you. Yeah, Darren?
How did the university help create the housing shortage? McCarthy Hall, gone. Ramsey Hall, gone. Wayne Hall, no beds. All of the students.
When did Wayne's, I think, I remember when I was there a year ago, far than me in Thursday. And Wayne was off his death.
Carol, McCarthy, Wayne, what? McCarthy, Wayne, Ramsey, Ramsey.
Ramsey Hall, Rexon.
By all means, it, it has to be cooperation between the borough and the university. Borough can't do it by themselves.
Very good. But thank you, everybody. Thanks, Steve, for, uh, for the same on the, yeah, presentation. Uh, so I'm gonna move to, uh, a German meeting.
I thought you were going around the table looking for comments on, uh,
He's got a date tonight.
College Arms, because, uh, some of us have. Okay, sure. So I, I just wanna say that, um, I had characterized containment. I can still go back to twenty eighteen, the terrible relationship between borough and the university. How hard those people worked to crack this agreement. And I think I characterized this as sort of an unwritten bargain. They could build a campus they wanted to and we would get containment. So I misspoke. So when I looked up the twenty eighteen document, point number E is contained. So I think the question is, why do they wanna break this contract? Or were those people that did this a long time ago just misguided? What has changed or said another way? What do we get? You wanna change the deal? What do we get out of it? Uh, I'll tell you what I wanna get. I wanna get the residents' requests, the list of students who want, uh, I wanna know are there eight hundred, sixteen hundred, three thousand? How many students really are? And, and that, that wasn't part of the deal and they didn't supply it, but I think we should know what that number is.
What?
I'm sorry?
I, I didn't understand.
There is a, the university keeps a list of students who want housing on campus. They add their name to a list. It's a secret list that they keep at the university. Yeah, I think they should share that number with us. That way we know the level of, these are people who wanna live, you know, uh, if we're gonna solve this problem, we need to know what is the problem. We don't know what the problem is. Is it we're looking for housing for a hundred students or thirty one hundred is, oh, I don't know.
It's funny, I was chatting with a friend of mine that does not live in the borough about this. And she, she kinda said a similar thing, like, we don't, we know there's a problem, but we have not really identified the.
That, 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 it, it exists. It's sitting in an office in, in the borough right now and I mean, I'm, that may not be the only thing you get in this negotiations if you do think that they were misguided in twenty eighteen and, or maybe some big changes taking place. I don't know what that big change is. I mean, I think what we don't consider is maybe there are just too many students. And there are a lot of students there because that's the number that they accept. They have complete control of that number. I'm happy that they've told us what it is and that they've stopped the growth of it. I think that's good. But I think they may have stopped it maybe at too high a number. I have a nice house. My wife and I lived there. It's great. We're very comfortable. If twenty-five people moved in, suddenly the house is too small. You know what I'm saying? Nothing wrong with the house. It's how many people are there. And if you think in this negotiation that happened in twenty eighteen, that College Arms is just ignored, that it wasn't discussed, I think that's really naive. I think it's a hard part of the negotiation. I didn't participate in the negotiations. I was part of the public. There were a lot of public meetings. Went to a lot of them. So I don't pretend to know in the hard discussions with West Ocean, with the university, exactly what transpired.
So you're saying, Alan, that it was purposely left out of the PUC, College Arms?
No question about it. No doubt about it.
So, may I ask where a copy of that would be?
Well, I mean, I'd be, this, this was the presentation. It was, it was a draft of the ordinance. But it became an ordinance. I, I didn't look up the ordinance, but I'm, I'm pretty sure if you look it up, one twelve, one forty-one E, uh, establishes boundaries. No, they wanted a super block and all of this and okay, they wanna close screen and there were lots of things that they wanted that were maybe not in the best interest of Westchester or something we would normally do. But why don't we give them what they want and we get what we want, which is containment? We didn't wanna become, we didn't wanna convert from Westchester to Westchester University, you know, and, uh, so, um, and the other thing I wanna say is this, that if we've completely eliminated the NC two thing and we're just into zoning, don't make the mistake of assuming that if you approve that zoning that they're requesting, that they're gonna build what those pictures show. You are giving them the right to build whatever the heck they wanna build. Keep that in mind, because the mind runs wild. When you see, you know, when you think about the draft would be, uh, the latitude that gives. Yes, yeah, please.
A couple of things. Um, in, in hearing a lot of different council people speak, I don't think the goal is to give them what they want in terms of zoning change. Uh, so I just wanted to make your mind on that regard.
Okay, that's my great cheer. Well, that we don't get it anymore.
I don't think that's for. It, it's not as bold as, it's just conversation. Uh, but I don't think that's for councilments. Um, you know, I think everyone's concerned and rightly so. But I think what we face in Westchester now is a result of good trouble. And because Westchester itself is growing, Westchester University is growing, space is limited. Everyone wants to be here.
No.
The university wants to be here.
No question.
University when, when two or three of the other state system universities are dying on the line and closing.
It's a high-quality problem. No.
High-quality problem.
No question about it.
Good trouble. And I think that we need to figure out ways that we can work together, maintain the quality of this community. And yet still, everyone wins. Everyone's not gonna be happy with the money they get. But everyone wins. Because what we don't wanna do is, uh, lose the favor of Westchester, the borough or, or lose Westchester, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
The university. So, we're, you know, we're going through growing pains. Uh, I use the analogy for marriage, there's a little strain on the marriage at the moment. But one of the things I've tried to do, because there was such contentiousness in previous administrations, and so I've tried to foster a sense of communication, uh, foster conversation, uh, between us, um, so that, um, you know, people kind of feel safe to say what they need to say. And to that point, you know, they come around, they laugh here, for instance. You know, when we talked about, listen, you're a strain on the resources of the borough. Uh, so last year they gave money to cover homecoming costs to the police, which is essentially to the borough. They've done the same this year. Uh, they were leaving me in check today. Uh, and, and then last week I heard that when they were at Dominion and they were talking about the, the ambulance, the fellowship.
As well, yeah.
The fellowship that they heard, they saw, they saw the diagram and they saw, you know, what proportion, what percentage they are creating in the, in the cost of ambulance service, you know? I, I had a call and they said, listen, we didn't know that. The first time we heard that, there was cost, but you know, they were like, oh, it's a big trigger ball, but we did, we never heard the amount. And so for the first time that evening, they saw the percentage, which they can figure out the amount. And, um, they're talking about perhaps even, you know, trying to do something that regard. So I think the new administration, uh, really wants to make sure that it's a legitimate situation. I wanna make sure it's legitimate. For the college, so that if you go together, like getting a good marriage. But sometimes you just have to give each other space.
Thank you, man.
I think we also need to maintain, I'm, I'm with you on.
Yeah.
We need to contain their vehicles because they're being.
The what?
Their cars are littered.
All the vehicles, oh.
Yeah, two cars are littered, all over the street, and they're left for weeks at a time in the same place. And for example, they may leave at September and they don't come to pick up that vehicle to get it until Thanksgiving. So it's, it's been worth them to change. Parking, to the university. They'll run each other up, they'll drop each other off, they're out of the car, rip around, whatever. They will leave to pause at that call for weeks at a time. The tires coming out, what it does then, they don't get tickets, they don't get anything. They just leave the cars. That's up there. Um, it's a usual point where people who live in the tower sometimes drop their second vehicle off in the borough or then, because they know there's no parking. It is, it's just, it, it's beyond, it's not, it's not fair to residents. Secondly, you have these other two vehicles there. And, you know, that.
So how do they get around the opposite side of the street parking for the street?
Oh, they'll just move it one way up and down. But then it's only on church. It's not on Westchester. So we can just keep putting the car, North Church gets, North Church and Virginia, North Church, Virginia, even on the other side. It's the same thing. These, these vehicles are, are drop-ins. That's what the reverse withdrawal. And they've gotten very clever, how should we remove those orange, green ones? So they could be put on, they're taught to get off, but unless you can, you know, so. And they won't. So we.
Uh, we, you, we were chatting. Uh, I think it sounds like another conversation could fancy that. It sounds like you guys, yes, were coming parking years ago and did, but I think it's worth trying to get at this.
I know people want. Because they have guests.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Okay, that, that, that is a balance. And I would say that it's a subsidized resource on street parking. And as soon as that's open, then you have somebody like Eli, and it makes sense that he's trying to ratchet his numbers down, like, um, Chestnut Street Garage or Apartments, and people are gonna start parking on the street. Because what, why would you not? And as long as our tickets are gonna only be twenty dollars, that's not much of a disincentive to not do that. So I guess I would just push back and you will then just say, you know, that is something that residents are gonna have to figure out. Well, which one do I want? Do I want the on-street parking or do I want that? Because that's really controlling the street and giving tickets that actually matter.
Right.
That's how you deal with this subsidized resource.
I will say this to the, that regards, that the police are working towards that way, parking is working towards that way. And that's one of the things I was making before is that there was a, a time before I was here, obviously. But I'm hearing the stories from the time before me, um, where every little department in the borough was asylum. And there wasn't much communication between everybody. But I will tell you that the police chief and I have sat down and talked and worked, looked for ways to help each other. We opened up using, uh, the portal system in between the individual departments a lot more. We're sitting down with, um, Public Works in regards to the trash issues, uh, with the new trash ordinance, working out a, a, an enforcement policy where he's writing letters to notify people first. Giving me a list of the people that have not met the obligation within his timeframe and I'm doing. doing the NOB and the, the citations on top of that. So it, it has something that has been going on for about a year, year and a half. From what I understand, it's more this, more um, interconnectedness and talking. I mean, the mayor's come in and let us know about issues that she's had, um, or seen with, that have been out there, um. You know, people call, contact, I think somebody contacted today about a, um, uh, zoning issue that they needed help with and, and her assistant sent it over to four day. This is a good relationship between them and he got it to me so that we can help take care of those things. So it's something that's a culture change that's been going on lately. And it's not where it needs to be, but it's moving in that direction. And it'll help to that. And that's why I said, and that's why I say it's not, it's a, it's an elephant right now. It's been cooked up.
Yeah.
And we have to just take little bites at it and, you know, one meal at a time.
Yes.
Um.
That's exactly the right way to approach it, though.
But we're not going to be able to digest that whole thing in one, one sitting. So we just have to keep coming back to it, keep coming back to it and keep coming back to it. So eventually we beat the entire elephant. For those people like elephants, I didn't mean to do that.
Yeah.
So let me, uh, let me ask you a question, Nicole. Uh, I want to get back to Alan's point because I think that's, uh, one that needs to be chased down and then we just got to figure out how to get there. Uh, who, who was the Borough Council? There's a, uh, group that meets with Westchester, um, University. Right? So those, I'm, I'm just trying to find out. So the question has to be answered. We have to understand. We know roughly seventeen thousand students. How many of those commute versus how many of those live? We know how many, based on you and Cole has a study. We understand how many beds are there, right? So there's just a math problem here. Somebody needs to give us the numbers. Because I think your numbers are low. That's why I'm saying, you know, when we're saying how many, if we have seventeen thousand, they're providing five thousand beds and that's a twelve thousand person loss.
All right. So I think the, the conversation tends to be around undergrad versus grad students, like, the, the, I, I don't know. I, I quite a few grad students that had a little bit more money and did a lot, a little, a lot more partying than undergrad. But nonetheless, um, the conversation tends to be around undergrads.
So, so my question is, why is it a secret?
Well, mine is, is how we get an answer, right? So somebody knows the answer. And so I.
Are we working together?
Right. So.
How many, how many people are trying to get out?
But I don't want to just ask it out in the air. So what I'm trying to do is to narrow it down and find out who. So if the contact Nicole with the university can get us that information, if you and Cole can get us, or if Nicole Ward can get us that information, somebody has that answer at the university. So let's make that, uh, a task, Alan, that you and I chase down.
Do you, do you, let me ask you this. Do you, is your question, how many people are on the waitlist? And then they give it to you?
No, no.
Well, I'm asking Alan, this Alan says specifically how many people are on the waitlist.
The waitlist are the people who cannot get housing on campus for longer.
Cause, cause there's, yeah.
That's our, that is our, that's our problem, you know?
But, but is it on campus or in Westchester? Because a lot of them don't want to live in dorms, but they want to live close by.
Yeah. So I think it's more fair to say how many beds are in demand in the Westchester, in Westchester borough. So, and I, and I think, so if they're short, five thousand beds, all right? And then so we need to, when we're talking to the university, understand we're looking to not to increase three hundred beds, but five thousand. We'd like to see them accommodate more students other than just freshmen on campus. When we're looking at the borough, we're trying to figure out how to open up some attainable housing, free up some of the investment properties and these, how, how can we pull those students out of there? And, and rather than being in these, uh, bedrooms or rooms or split houses or whatever there, because it is a tough, tough ask. When I look at Westchester off-campus housing, go onto their website, look at those rates, they're about twelve hundred bucks a bed per month. That's what they're paying. So it's not like the money's not available. I mean, if that's what they're paying to have a, a bed somewhere in somebody and a shared with somebody else that aren't even related to, that's a lot of money.
So, so this is my rough, um, uh, you know, non-exact calculation. Thirteen thousand undergrads. Westchester University currently has fifty three hundred beds on campus with the projections going to increase to about sixty five hundred. So this leaves sixty seven thousand students living off campus. Assume a thousand live at home, like just wherever they're from, um, with their parents. Assume fifteen hundred are living in our licensed housing. Um, in the borough. And then assume a thousand are living in, this is where I'm starting to like just make up numbers, but assume a thousand are living in like West Ocean or somewhere else in housing, like all club apartments. So that will leave us probably somewhere around two or three thousand students that are living somewhere in the borough in non-licensed student housing would be my rough undergrads, roughest.
Which could be the, I'm, I guess I'm thinking of the one bedrooms, uh, like the previous borough came development or any of Eli's.
So, yeah, I didn't put it in, I think some of them were in one of these.
Right.
Places. Yeah. And, and so that, that kind of without getting data, much more data than that number of beds from the university and knowing how many we have, that's a triangulation. We can ask the question again.
And a waitlist would be the place to start because they for sure have that right now.
Yeah, that, well, that's why, yes, I think they have a waitlist at the beginning of the year, like what's, how they, this waitlist.
I think it's a running list because every day they bring in a transfer student, a student leaves for some other, it flucks out or whatever and.
Some of them drop off. So I'm wondering.
Yeah, right, of course.
To get the, the, the number that people that want to live there.
But we really shouldn't be guessing at the problems we have to solve. Let's begin with knowing what it is. And then try to solve.
I said they're not the ones.
That's a merit to have good trouble, right? But nevertheless, it's a, it's a, it's a tax on our resource. It's a, it's a hurts the resources of the borough.
Yeah.
Um, and we talk about all these other schools in a lot of other burrows, Cootstown, Millersville, Indiana, uh, Bloomsburg, Swatford. Nobody's going to those schools. They're coming here. And the reason they're coming here is because of the birth. The education in each of those other schools is equivalent. It's university system. They're equivalent. They're coming here for the borough. Should have.
And, and, and the part of it, the, the, the tricky part is we have to remember that part of the reason the borough is what the borough is, is because we have the commerce and the parents and all of it.
Yeah.
What, the life, the, the, you know, it.
Yeah.
Their day, we, part of the reason Lock Haven is not so exciting anymore is because students are wanting to go there.
We're in the middle of BFE, that's why.
Yeah.
I grew up outside of Lock Haven. It's in the middle of nowhere. But keep in mind that the students are also part of the flavor of Westchester, too.
But they're, they're residents while they're here, they live here, they contribute to the town. So I mean, I just think, uh.
I, I just wanted to say thank you to Alan for bringing that up. I think it's such a good point. And I think that, like, what are we, like, what's the negotiation? And you brought up the map earlier. So, you know, one thing, you know, is there a portal for the university, for example, to buy rentals, right? Like, we have these student rentals that are around. Maybe there's some kind of way of buying there. So then the neighborhood can say, hey, the university wants to buy them for fifty thousand dollars a piece or twenty five thousand dollars a piece, whatever it makes sense to a landlord. And they can gather another hundred beds or whatever for College Arms. Maybe, maybe there's a portal like that, but thinking creatively like you're saying, and really negotiating is, um, which you're saying, there, it's not like they're just going to make that zoning change, but I really appreciated that.
Yeah, I mean, at, at this point, it's only kind of limited to the, the outlook is not suited for this piece, right? There's been all of the.
There's your point. Hopefully there's a win-win, right? Maybe, maybe it is that you can buy those student rentals from these landlords. Maybe, maybe landlords are happy to, to partner that for twenty five thousand or fifty thousand dollars. Maybe that makes sense to the university. I don't know.
But I just. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, you have to remember that there was a period, not too long ago, twenty, twenty years ago, twenty, twenty five, nineteen ninety four, when the town was shuttered. So it's the university that was running the town. Uh, because the university was slowly doing better and Westchester was going down the tubes a little. And so, um, people didn't come here for the town then. They came here for the education because, you know, they've been completely excelling. And, and I think it was during that time period, they were able to buy some property because nobody wanted to buy property in Westchester. Now you can get property for a song and a dance. Now you're going to have to sing and dance to get property. But, and then still won't get it. My point is, you know, so slowly in the last twenty years since ninety four, ninety five, we turned that around and now here we are, a thriving town, partly because the per se has been thriving. And because people have reinvested in Westchester. Uh, and here we are, good trouble.
Yeah, yeah. Agree, agree. Sorry, no.
Um, in conclusion, I'm just going to read the one line that is the item that I'm talking about uh, on the code for establishing the university district. Establish, this is the purposes and intent of this legislation. Establish boundaries and the maximum density for the future development of the university campus and related uses. Just pleading with our Borough Council representatives to bring that to life. Because they worked hard to get that and we want to see that. That's what we want to see.
Very good. Thank you. Anything, anybody else? Steve?
Now, are we adjourned?
All right, I'm on, I'm on.
All right, now I'm going to move to adjourn. Second, two second. Very good. Then we adjourn. That's great.